Okay, I'm gonna call the meetings to order at 6:05. Thank you all for coming.
I don't do pass orders.
Adjustments to the agenda, we're gonna remove 6.1 policy. We are going to add, under executive session, the first one will be personnel, the second one will be negotiations, so for those of you, sorry Brendan and Erin and everybody who wants to leave early, you have to stay for executive session. And I also just want to introduce our budget buddies, or have our budget buddies introduce themselves, and thank them for coming and joining us for the next few weeks. Hopefully no more snowstorms. So, do you wanna start with?
Lynn, maybe we should all intro- can I just say, maybe we should all introduce ourselves?
We could certainly do that. Okay, so Ray? You wanna start? You gotta introduce yourselves to our budget buddies.
I'm Kelly Maynor, junior high frig, I've been on the board for, I don't know, eight years, five years?
I'm Kyle, I'm a senior student rep.
I'm Kate, I'm a junior student rep.
I'm Kate Coughlin, I'm community, I forget what the name is this year. Community advisor.
Liaison buddy, whatever.
I live in Shelburne, I have two boys, one is in first grade and one is in sixth grade, and I work in technology in Boston from home, so doing a lot of budgeting myself.
I'm Brendan Leonard, and I have three kids who have either gone through or are going through schools. I have a freshman here at CVU, I have a sixth grader at WCS, I'm from Williston, and I have a 2015 graduate from here. And I work in, I've worked in higher ed for years, but lately I've worked at the YMCA as the CFO.
And I'm Rick Detweiler, I have three kids, but they're long past this age. I actually was principal at Charlotte back in, maybe 88, and then I went overseas and had a career as eventually headmaster of American International Schools, came back about nine years ago, and got involved with the school actually in the principal search then, and delighted to be here, learning as well as listening to you.
Thanks, sir.
I'm Jeff Gordon, I'm representative on the board from Charlotte, and I'm a psychologist, I have two children who are 13 and 15, and subjectively at CCS, and technically at CVU.
My name's Eric Elmhath, I live in Williston, I've got three kids in the school system, I've got a third grader and a sixth grader at WCS, and a ninth grader here at CVU. I work in technology for Williston.
I'm Elaine Pinkney, I'm the superintendent of the Champlain Valley School District, I have two kids that went through the system many years ago. Proud CVU parent.
I'm Lynn Donick, CVU, CVSD board, boy, CVU board.
I know.
And I don't really wanna know if you're not a Navy fan, so, go Navy.
Brendan McMahon.
School board member.
Kelly Bowen, school board member.
Dave Conery, school board member, and today this afternoon, I was asked by Kate Webb if I had any questions for Betsy DeVos, and I'm still reeling from where it started.
Oh, is that it opened?
Yeah, if anybody has any questions for Betsy DeVos.
David's taking notes.
I'll take notes.
When are you stepping down?
I was gonna ask her if wolf and bear attacks were down in schools.
I'm Jocelyn Adams, I'm a CVSD school board member from Williston.
Hi, I'm Erin Brady, school board member.
Bonnie Birdsall, Director of Digital Learning and Communication for the school district.
Mark McDermott, Director of Human Resources and Policy and Legal Services for the district.
Ross Cafrey.
Jeff Evans, Director of Learning Innovation, CVU, CVSD? CVU.
We're interviewing everyone. I'm Megan Roy, I'm the Director of Student Support Services.
Welcome all, and please feel free to get back to the room.
There's no one cookie limit either.
How many did you have?
I only had one, but feel free to have two.
Apparently there's no limit on cookies.
I had two.
Okay. Any audience for communications? Okay, we're gonna get off, start our budget season, sorry for the delay, we weren't the only one that canceled our meeting last Tuesday night, so I appreciate your all patience for this. And before we get started, I think Jean is starting with the first pass. In the past years, if anyone has had questions, we've tried to funnel questions, if you have them after the meeting, if you wake up in the middle of the night dreaming about this budget, I have a number you can call if you need help, but actually, if you have questions about the budget, email them to Brendan, and Brendan will funnel them to Jean, and the two of them will work together, to get an answer through the next meeting. That just, you know, keeps Jean from getting the emails. And with that said, we'll start with the first draft budget overview. Jean? Okay. I like this podium, it's very important. All right, so, we're gonna flip through some orienting charts before we jump into numbers, so just bear with me. Just as a reminder, this is gonna be a 30,000-foot look at where the administrative budget is. You'll be seeing the details starting tonight and then the next two weeks, so, not that I couldn't answer any question you have, but I'm not going to, 'cause I'd be stealing the thunder of other people, so, just to set the expectations here. No, Megan was messing with my cursor. It's all my fault. I'm just, I'm assuming these are the passouts? Oh yeah, does anyone need a copy of the presentation? Do you guys? So, what we tend to do tonight, we're going to, I'm gonna step through just a little overview, a reminder of what the board has outlined, does its role in the budget process, very quickly touch on the goals, more just for completeness than for a heavy review, since I've been looked at them a couple times already this fall. Yesterday, the tax commissioner, state tax commissioner put out his guidance letter, so I have a slide on that, just to orient you on what's going on at that level, and then you can look at the numbers. Russ, stop looking at the numbers. So, we have two pages, and the board should be all familiar with it, and we just took the budget buddies through it, but really it's just a reminder of our process, which is a policy board to give guidance and goals, as opposed to the details. And it might feel a little strange to, if you're not used to a budget, to not be going through the details, but at this point, it's about giving guidance, it's about setting policy, it's about setting direction for the superintendent. Negotiating compensation is not meant to be in bigger numbers, it just fell off the bottom of the slide, I think. It's about prioritizing, there's a prioritization on consolidating our savings, and what I mean by prioritization is, not that you prioritize it high or low, but that that's your job, right? So, that's the direction that you give. The board has an oversight role for special ed planning process, and when Megan walks through that tonight, just as a reminder, is that that's a really tricky one to review because of student privacy, but the board's role is making sure that the process makes sense, so touching on that. And then improvements in the five-year capital plan and our operations roles. Any comment, question on this, we good? Okay. These are the goals that we did approve in October, I think I put it on there, October. Mission and vision, the important components of our education system, state education quality standards, providing, you know, it's really setting up a budget process, I mentioned to the budget buddies, and it probably is worth mentioning again, is that this is only our second year with this process, so we still are learning our way through how this works, and if you have any notes about this didn't work, or it did work, you know, jot them down, because we'll wanna kinda take a review at the end of the budget process and see if there's a way to improve the process. But it's important, it's important for, to get input from our stakeholders, the equity versus autonomy, you'll be seeing that quite a bit next week when Elaine does her regular ed presentation, and innovation, which is hard, hard to do in a big system, but important, and so we're gonna continue to push that as a priority. All right. So, yesterday, or every December 1st, or the Monday thereafter, I guess, the tax commissioner comes out with a letter which essentially sets the components that are eventually gonna make up the tax rate. So, the tax commissioner gathers information on the number of students that we're expecting next year, that he takes a forecast of what schools think they're gonna spend next year, there's the component of what property values are doing, puts that all into a big meat grinder, and is also, remember, we don't just have property taxes, right? We collect taxes for schools through property tax, through income, there's graduated numbers in between all of that, it's a tremendous model that they have to put together, and at the end of the day, they say, this is where I think the numbers are gonna land, so that, if you remember last year, the numbers that he was forecasting said, we're gonna be raising, from what I see, tax rates are going up 10 cents. That was shocking, and it has to do with the components of taxes in the state that are going into the education fund, which funds education. This year, the good news is, is that they're saying they won't go up at all, in fact, they're going the other direction a little bit. So essentially flat tax rates is what he's forecasting. Behind those numbers is a couple things. One is that the property tax and income yield is the kinda key number, that's, you'd have to, you'd have to, I should've brought my two pages on tax rates if you want to understand that, but trust me on it, yields, yields are important, that where he sets the yield is where, is the indicator of whether tax rates are going up or down. So, he's increased them a little bit, which is good, because when yields go up, tax rates go down a little bit, so that's good news. Kinda the bad news is that, one reason for that is that property values are going up. So, if your house is now worth more, but your tax rate's a little bit down, you could be paying the same amount of money.
Or more?
Hmm?
Or more?
Or more, or more, right, could be paying more. Do you live in Shelburne, maybe? But it's a tax rate, which is what we end up talking about a lot here, it won't be up because of the yield. Behind there is two things that are pretty interesting, one is, it's a four-point, the assumption from the information that he's gathered from school boards, is that school spending is going up 3.25 percent next year. And that's in an environment where student count is going down almost 1 percent. So that's, those are the pieces of, the pieces that he fed into his model to come up with the tax rate, so he's looking at 3.25 percent increase statewide for school spending. Then, if you'll remember last year, the other component of this tax letter was, was the ask, you know, what the governor, the tax commissioner, what he wants. The ask this year is, they are asking school boards to limit per pupil, instead of, well this, the numbers I just told you before, has a per pupil spending increase of 4.1 percent. They were asking school boards to keep the per pupil spending at 2.5 percent, and they say if we could do that, instead of 4.1, it comes at 2.5, it will throw off about $20 million, which could pay for early education spending. Anybody else who read the note, that's how I-
As opposed to lower taxes?
Or lower taxes, but he called out, he's always chosen both, actually. So, lot of numbers, but I guess the important one for us is that they're expecting spending to go up 3.25 percent, and they want it to go up less. Lynn, I know you read through the letters, I-
Yeah, I think the one thing, in our specific case too, if you do jump forward and start thinking about taxes, we don't know our CLAs, and you also have to remember the incentive this year is 2 cents less than it was next year, or last year, so that, even though he's saying that, you know, people can expect their property taxes not to go up significantly, it's what, 1. something percent because of the increase in grant lists, we do have that 2 cents that we had last year that we don't have this year.
Eight to six, or-
Eight to six, yep. Okay, let's see, oops, wrong way.
Our budget advisors clear on what the 2 cents is that we're talking about. So, when we formed a unified district per Act 46, we received, let's start, 10, 8, 6, 4, and 2 cents discount on the tax rate as an incentive for that. So, as we said, we're going into a year where we're getting 6 cents, getting a 6 cent credit, but it was 8 last year, so it's not 6 cents, it's 2 cents less.
It was part of the incentive package for, for early adopters to consolidate for Act 46, as opposed to some of the schools that you see going through it today, so we are tiered into that, yeah.
Brendan, I know I pulled a fast one on you this weekend, you-
Yeah, absolutely, so-
Brendan is our, is the head of the finance committee at that list.
So, in, last year, we decided as a board that what we were gonna try to do was set our, stand over here, just behind everyone. Try to set our increases at the average between NEAP and CPI, which last year was 2.7 percent for NEAP, and CPI was 1.6 percent, which gave us a budget increase of roughly 2.3 percent. So that's what we assumed was gonna happen year over year. But this year, due to circumstances beyond our controls, is this slide bothering anybody besides me?
We just checked, it's not the computer, I don't think we-
Something's making that shake.
So, um-
Brendan, excuse me, just, we, and CPI, and you just did that.
Consumer, NEAP and Consumer Price Index, what's NEAP stand for?
New England Economic Partnership.
Partnership.
Yep, are essentially price indexes, which is the cost of goods, increase of cost of goods year over year, or services, depending what index you're looking at. This year, the average between the two was a 2.6 percent increase, a little bit higher than what we expected last year. So what the finance committee is requesting and recommending to the board is that we change the target to 2.6 percent this year, based on the higher indexes than what we had last year.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
So if you remember, the board set the 2.3, so I'm gonna have, next week I'm gonna have to, we'll have to warn, have to ask you to change it to 2.6, because it's a little more consistent. If it was just a target, I probably wouldn't ask, I'd say, I love a good target, I'll go for 2.3, we'll see what we can do, but honestly, the things that are driving CPI, NEAP up are the things that are affecting our budget. Our support staff's costs are going up, because it's just, with low unemployment, it's just hard to get folks, our support staff folks to come to work for us. Health insurance is going up 10.9 percent year over year, and that's, that's a Vermont thing, because of the ACA and how it was implemented year to year.
That's, the health insurance, I believe is a projection, they haven't carved that in stone yet, is that correct?
Has it been approved, Mark?
So that's the request from VI to the state, and it's never been refused. So the 10.9 percent is the increase on the most common, and when I say most common, about 90 percent of the people who take our healthcare, health insurance plan, CDHP Gold, is going up 10.9 percent.
So that is a finalized number?
It's pretty final, yeah.
Okay. I can draw up some things that directly affect us indirectly, we're being hit by tariffs also, I believe, and other items that we just don't have any control over, and we won't have any control over. This was, been a, we've had detailed discussions on how these affected our budget, and you guys will learn about them over the next few weeks.
So we shouldn't ask the question about what tariffs are, because we'll get that answered.
Oh yeah. Probably to expect, honestly, I do have the 20, I have the 25 percent tariffs into the hardware IT costs we have, which hopefully, I mean, it got pushed out, maybe if I run out quick and buy our, buy our stuff, it wouldn't work, it'd still have to be next year, darn it. I don't get the money till July, I can't buy early. All right, so, 2.6, I'm gonna ask you, ask you for that next week, so, okay. So, that's the good news, this is the bad news, I guess. Administrations recommending a budget of $79 million, with a 2.8 percent increase, we couldn't get to the 2.6, despite an awful lot of work to get there, 168,000 on 79 million. You'll see the pieces of that over the next couple weeks. Keep in mind, this is only the expense side of the budget, a big part of not being able to get to a lower number is that we have some special ed costs that are over that number, that comes with revenue, which I haven't taken into account here. So when we see the whole package, we might get help on the revenue side, which may get the board to the same place it wants to be with the model, but the expense right now is over the target. The, let's see, the, okay, so, oh, the other piece, when we get to it is, which I haven't talked about, and I, because Lynn and I realized, and she caught me on this, I've got a different number on chart, but another big component is, tax rates are based off of per pupil spending, and unlike the state, our numbers are actually creeping up a little bit every year. On the other chart, they don't quite show it that way, so I gotta go back and double check, but the numbers that I, I pulled this morning are, were going up a little bit each year, so that's good news for, for our system. All those things may make 2.8 more palatable, but I do recognize that it's over the target. So, a couple of other just big points, salary increase, as you know, since we're in negotiations, is an estimated number, which we won't talk about in public because it's part of negotiations. The overall benefits is up almost $700,000, primarily because of the healthcare costs. HRAs, for those of you who remember this from last year, we fund HRAs for our employees, just like last year, we're holding it at, at 60 percent of that number, because not everybody uses everything in their HRA. That's, turns out to be a pretty good number, right, from what we, spot on.
So Jean, you just said that our per pupil count is going up, and that's a good thing?
No, our-
Did you mean our people-
Pupil count is going up, yeah, thanks, yep. What you'll see next, this is interesting, next week, some of the highlights again, we are having, we've made some assumptions on class size adjustments, it's just interestingly enough that they're at either ends of our spectrum. The high school has some big classes coming through, they're gonna need some adjustments at, at the high school level, and our K1, 2 programs have some class size adjustments between schools, so you'll see that next week. We have included funding for the CVU School Resource Officer. Let's see, here's the operations spending, energy costs are forecasted to go up, that's a big driver there, and then the tariffs, you'll see that on the 18th. Food service, we baked into this number, as you know, food service has been running a deficit, more than the, than the budgeted subsidy for about four years in a row now, we've just fessed up to it and put it all in the budget. So you'll see that on the 18th as well, what that number looks like. We've included the innovation fund at $100,000, just like last year. Another highlight, first pass, let's see, this is the consolidation savings, that my number right now is at $612,000 of savings due to the consolidation of our school districts. Been going back and forth, and I didn't check this number if it was, Jeff knows this, with 300, no.
We disagree.
We can't remember if the board promised 300 or 500, but in either case, this is over, over that number. So this is what, each year we look at what we, that's what I was thinking too, but, over five years. So right now, it's, this is the third year, and we're at six. So, new this year, I put money, some money in there for transportation, honestly, I got, I'll have a sharper pencil on that number after December, this is the consolidating Charlotte into our transportation system, and school choice. We have kids in St. George who could choose to tuition out at the high school, which they don't do anymore, so as those kids graduate, we don't have to pay that tuition bill, it's gonna, it's gonna save some money as well.
I think it's like 2%.
I think it's like 2%, yep. And here's the budget. Top line is special ed, you can see it's up 3.3 percent. That is before the revenue piece of it, that's just the spending, and you'll see some of that tonight. I always know what to call the second group, I have, I know what special ed is, I know what operations is, everything else is in the middle. So that's a-
And instruction?
Thank you. So that's, all the spending that falls into those categories, 2.7, operations we have sitting at about 2.6, you can see the food service, the $91,000 there, increase in food service. Debt, unlike last year where it went through the roof, has gone down just a little bit as, as some of the older pieces of debt roll off. And bottom right corner, 2.8 percent. So that is your 30,000-foot view of the journey we are on for the next few weeks. Oops, one. So tonight, you'll see the first pass, seen the first pass budget, you'll see the special ed service plan. Next week will be regular ed delivery plan, and hopefully I'll have the equalized pupil count, that'll help. On the 18th is everyone's favorite, operations and maintenance. And then when we come back, that'll be the whole spending piece of the story, and then when we come back in January, you'll see the rest of the puzzle, which is the revenue side of it, and the tax implications. And that's the meeting where hopefully the board says, this is what exactly we wanna take to the voters, and that's when we have, because on the 22nd is the, sort of our drop dead date, to have to have decisions made and numbers crunched, because we have to go put the warning together for the public, so. Any questions? Yep.
I just wanna make a comment to our budget base fund now. As you're seeing this for the first time, and it could be very confusing in the way we put together our budget, and what I'd invite you to do really is reach out to Brendan with your questions, or, because what that will do actually is really help me as we try to formulate communication to the public. Because we go through the process, and we think we know what we're explaining, but our job really is to be able to explain what we're doing to the public. So your questions would be really helpful to help us articulate that, so that's just a-
Along those same lines, the, the schedule changed slightly for how our meetings are gonna happen, are we gonna let the public know that it's, like, basically today is last week's meeting, just so people need to know that we are having a meeting next week? Are we gonna blast that out?
It's on all of the school websites, it's on Facebook and Twitter, and it'll be in school newsletters.
And then are we gonna-
And we can put it on from porch forum, that's easy to do.
I was just waiting for that to come.
Oh.
Thanks.
How come you just didn't ask for it from porch forum?
Well-
Any other questions about the first pass?
I have a, I have a question, I wanna say, because, as somebody who has my own budget at work and home, if the recommendation is for 2.5, are we okay with 2.8, or are we just gonna say, this is what we're doing, this is our best, we've done our best, or are we trying to get down to 2.5?
So this is the first time that we've actually been over the target, we raised the target last year, so this is a learning experience, my recommendation would be that for right now, you just all hold it open mind, and as you see what comes up for the next couple of weeks, you decide if that's gonna be acceptable, if not, we'll go back and figure out how to take it out.
Okay.
Does that make sense to everybody, is what I'm trying to kind of, come back to?
The other part that's, that's, there's, there's a whole other half too, to the, to the budget discussion, which is the revenue and the, and the fund balance application. There are lots of different ways that the board could, could react to that overage, so to Jean's point, it's best to kinda hear everything, understand what's come, what cuts have already been made or considering being made, before we, we say, no, you gotta stick to this.
That's a good question.
Yeah, we're, we're learning.
The funny is, we spend a lot of time trying to figure out how exactly to approach this, and it kinda makes it sense, well, sense, I think, to everybody at this point, is just to see the details and make a decision, and when you see the whole picture.
And a couple of things that have been sort of wild cards for us in the past with crafting this budget, is obvious, the obvious one is consolidation, and bringing one, all of our budgets into this one big budget. So this is our first formal, what I say formal is the first budget cycle we had, was very reactionary, as we kinda just struggled to put it together, and that was all about last year. This has been our really first, our formal look at, ooh, what will the budget look like, how it might work, but within that too, then there's, there's been the whole-
But within that, too, then there's, there's been the whole healthcare thing, which has been a really, um, another kind of wild card. So, those are the pieces that we're trying to figure out and navigate as we go.
But didn't you just say, Brendan, that two point six would be taking a hundred and sixty-eight thousand out of the budget? Okay.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay, Megan.
Special ed, they're coming around, the date on the front is last week's date, but all the slides are, um, what you'll see here, should be. So, um, here's what we're gonna talk about and cover tonight. Um, the first thing is, I'm gonna talk a little bit about special education funding, um, and the changes that are coming up, not for next year, but for, very soon after that, and it's related to the revenue piece that we're talking about. So I'm gonna give you an overview of what we know now. I will do a quick review and remind you how the special ed portion of the budget is put together, um, and then we'll go through the budget, um, including some comparative data across schools, and we will talk a little bit about integrated wellness, um, which are the services that, um, used to fall under the category of CY, um, but really fall into our student support system now. So, um, ask questions, stop, I'll hopefully see you, or someone will flag me. This is the functional area that we're in, is special ed services, that's what we're gonna spend the bulk of the time talking about. This is not a deep dive, though, into what special education is, how decisions are made, what are the programs that we have, that's something that we do every third year. Uh, we think that this spring is actually that year, so you'll have a, a conversation about a deeper dive into that. So, if you have questions, I will do the best that I can to answer them, I might not go into a lot of depth, because you'll hear about that, um, later this year. And I will touch a little bit on some supports to the classroom that are not part of special education, but are included in this presentation, and then additional supports to the classroom will be next week, in Elaine's presentation.
Megan, what was DMC on the previous?
DMC, so, it, that's the District Management Council, which is now known as the District Management Group. That is the organization that conducted an analysis for us about five years ago, it did a statewide analysis, and the recommendations that came out of that are baked into Act one seventy-three, which is our new, um, funding bill. Really, it's about what our best practices in, uh, supporting kids who struggle, all kinds of kids who struggle. Thanks. Any questions? Okay, so, Act one seventy-three, um, and board members have gotten a couple of written updates about this, um, but for those of you new to this, uh, Act one seventy-three wa- is legislation that passed at the end of last session, um, primarily covering how special education is funded in Vermont, um, and also recommending a series of best practices related to systems of support for kids who struggle. And what I'm gonna cover here is the funding difference. Prior, well, where we are right now, so this, this is where we are here, and this is where we are next year, Vermont has a reimbursement model for special education funding, so every dollar that we spend in special education right now is reimbursed by statewide funding at about sixty percent for all of the dollars, and then we have something called extraordinary cost, and that means if an individual student's costs are more than fifty thousand dollars, we get sixty percent reimbursement on that first fifty, and then ninety percent reimbursement after that. That's our model right now. Uh, that model's been problematic, it's problematic because it, um, is very cumbersome to document all of those expenses and ensure that you are, um, only spending special ed dollars on special ed students, it also precludes flexibility. So if I'm a special educator and I'm working with a group of kids, um, I have to count the kids in my group and make sure that the majority of them are special education, uh, it means like, that means kids who struggle but aren't eligible can't benefit from my instruction. That's the old model, uh, because then part of my time is not allowable, and I wouldn't receive reimbursement for it. State has recognized for a while, um, as have most of us in the field, that that's not a great model, um, puts too much emphasis on the eligibility of kids and not enough emphasis on what we're doing with them. State convened a funding study to look at special ed costs. Special ed costs, um, per student in Vermont are quite a bit higher than, uh, most of the rest of the country, which was also a driver for some, for this legislation. But without going into too much detail, this law changes our funding model from a reimbursement model to a census-based funding model, and that means that there will be a grant amount calculated, I'm gonna explain to you how they calculate it, and you will, schools will receive that count per ADM, not per eligible special ed student. So, once the grant is calculated, you'll receive that amount times the number of kids you have, Aaron.
You're talking about this change, all of special ed, not just extraordinary costs?
Correct. And to your point, there is still an extraordinary cost, uh, component of the funding model. So that's what this chart is, and if you have it, or if it's on your screen, you can make it bigger, I know you can't read it from here. Right now, this is the way we've always done it, sixty percent reimbursement, and this is our threshold for extraordinary costs. We develop a service plan every year, we send it to the state, that's our estimated amount that we're gonna spend on special education. Next year is the last year that we will have that reimbursement, based on our spending. So, um, when Jean talks about, right now, we don't know, we will put a revenue forecast in place to see how much, um, how much of our spending is going to be offset by revenue. In the future, that won't be based on what we spend, by and large. Starting in FY twenty-one, so not next year, but the year after, the agency event will calculate a census amount for each district individually. There's actually gonna be two calculations happening in FY twenty-one. The first one is, they will take roughly our special ed spending from the past three years, so twenty, nineteen, eighteen, average it out, and divide it by the number of kids in our district. That becomes our new census block grant amount. So it's basically our, based on our own spending, which is a softer way of getting there. At the same time, they're going to calculate a uniform, what will become a uniform base amount. The uniform base amount will be calculated by statewide average spending from the past three years. And that amount becomes the target that, that we will all get, we, meaning every school district and, school district in Vermont, will get in FY twenty-five. In these in-between years, twenty-two to twenty-four, we will take our amount in twenty-one and their amount in twenty-five. If we currently spend less, we will move up to that amount. That's not, there are very few schools that will be in that situation. If we currently spend more, then we will spend those years stepping down until we match the uniform base amount in twenty twenty-five. So I'll pause for a second.
So where are we? Are we early down?
So, so we have done, um, we will do a more in-depth look at this. Jean's sort of back-of-the-envelope estimate, because we fall at, or slightly below, the statewide average in special ed spending, we are unlikely to have a big cliff one way or the other in order to get to our target. That's a good thing, and we don't, there are some districts who will essentially receive a significant cut in special ed support from the state. And if you remember, special education is an entitlement, we can't stop providing special ed services simply because we get less money from the state. But for us, we think that number is going to be relatively soft and achievable. After the budget season is over, we'll do a more, um, detailed look, I also just found out at a meeting on Monday that the state is working on a calculator for us, so, so that should give us a more detailed amount. But the upshot of this is, and the reason why it's relevant for, um, budget building is, we are, this is part of the problem of special ed costs, we are used to a model where special ed budget goes up at a high rate, is softened by the fact that we, our revenue will go up at a commensurate, commensurate amount. That won't happen anymore. Um, we do still have extraordinary cost, um, provision, so if we have individual students who have very costly services associated with them, we will still be reimbursed. The threshold goes up to sixty thousand, this fifty thousand dollar threshold was in place when the law was first put into place and never adjusted for inflation, so arguably it's too low. So it will be at sixty, and, um, but we will get ninety-five percent reimbursement on the dollars over sixty thousand. So, we are still, um, there is still a way to, um, understand that some districts have students who have very high costs, and we're sort of shielded from that because that will still be. There's a lot of detail still being unpacked about this, uh, how are they gonna monitor our costs, how are we going to, um, know how much money is spent on individual kids when we no longer track, uh, spending the way that we have been? Those are all things that will keep you informed as we go forward. Questions about this? Yeah?
Just a general budget question about special education, this first pass budget, does this special education number, uh, sixteen million, does that include reimbursement that we get from the state, or is that out of pocket for others?
It's just expense.
Just expense, for right now, yep.
The revenue will come in January.
Yeah, we'll see if we have that number. Okay. All right, so, just as a small reminder, um, please, this is our leadership team in special education, and I put this slide in here to kind of remind you that decision-making for what we spend in special education, uh, comes from what's written in a student's individual education plan. But we have a model that provides special ed director leadership in all of our buildings, and, uh, leadership that oversees early education. So, together, we are able to, to create decision-making structures so that we are consistent in how we make decisions around spending. So, I think this is helpful for the board to understand that, um, we do have oversight into how those decisions are made, um, with individual teams. Quick review of what our process is, it starts the previous, end of the previous school year, all of our special educators, uh, sit down and, and upload the services for each of the kids on their caseload, and any kids that we predict for next year. So we, we take the kids who are turning, um, turning three and entering our early childhood programs, we remove the kids who are exiting, and we put all of that into a database. Over, building-based administrators review all of that for basic accuracy, um, they make sure we have the right kids i- in there, um, and they start looking at more school-wide services like OT, occupational therapy, physical therapy, school psychologist services. In the fall, I meet individually with all of them, we review their data, we look at what they, how they look compared to the rest of the district, uh, what their trends are, um, what they've actually been spending. The operations team takes a look at staffing, uh, we pull together the budget, and then we have meetings with each school's principal and special ed director and finance team. We spend a week, um, meeting with them for long chunks of time and digging into their budget, to make sure that what they, what we are reflecting in the budget is reflective of decisions that they are comfortable with. This last bullet, we have to submit for the last time, last, this was our last one. On October fifteenth, we have to submit a service plan to the state. Um, that is a provision that goes away with the new funding model. Building our budget is not likely to change very much at all. From here, what might change is we'll have some flexibility on when we have to wrap up our first round. That, uh, that October fifteenth is kind of artificial, um, so we might flex that. And then we have multiple rounds of special ed budgeting, based on how the special ed budget is looking, and you'll see that in this presentation. So depending on what that first round number looks like, we either come back and continue talking, or, or we don't have to. We often have to come back and continue talking. I also wanna give the board just a little bit of a reminder, there are two things on the left-hand side of this slide that you heard about last year. These are supports that we've created since being consolidated. Uh, the first one is the CVSD consultation team, the, um, intensive needs coach is the person who facilitates that, her name is Jen Randall, she's funded through IDAB, which is a special education grant, um, so there's not an impact on the budget for her. The goal of this team is to create a body of expertise that can be deployed to teams across the district, and reduce our need to have to look elsewhere for that. And they work with kids who have multiple disabilities, uh, autism spectrum disorders, emotional disturbance, kind of very complex kids and teams. Teams make referrals, this group, um, comes and works individually with that team and provides support. They also provide a lot of system support and consultation, so the goal here is that we reduce the need for outside contracts, and we, we build capacity within. This is really only the first formal year of it, um, so we have reduced, not significantly, um, outside contracts yet, but, um, but we have had to contract out for individual team support less. And the second piece, um, that you heard about last year, we have a director of early education, we increased that FTE last year by no longer hiring a consultant to manage our universal preschool, uh, this falls under Shelley's direction now, and there is some grant funding that supports this position. We have, we serve over three hundred kids in our universal pre-K program in community-based settings, um, that's a lot of children. We also serve students with disabilities who are ages three to five, both in school-based programs and off-site, um, so there's a lot for her to oversee. Her focus right now, um, is bringing those folks together as a team, we have variability in early ed numbers across the district, we can manage that variability without having to hire staff, if we think of that staffing as a whole, so she's working through that right now. Some of your schools' numbers are going up, and others are going down, and rather than cutting staff and adding staff, we're looking at how do we just serve those kids differently? That wouldn't be possible if we didn't have that position. And things that we are talking about, um, is kind of expanding this consultation team with, um, right now, we have students whose needs are significant enough that in order to serve them in our building, we have to contract to outside agencies who, who provide us with staffing and oversight and, and highly trained, um, people to support kids. Uh, we think we could develop a program that replicates that and keeps it in-house, um, and so what's being studied right now is, to the extent that we can take the funding that we're currently sending outside the district and create a program inside the district. I'm not bringing to you any, any numbers associated with that, I just want you to know that we're talking about that. If we were to move forward with this, it would be a budget-neutral, um, decision, but this all goes along with our desire to build capacity, decrease our reliance on sending kids out of the system. And we also want to have additional expertise on the consultation team. Questions about this? Yep, right?
It's alternative and augmentative communication.
Yep, it is communication supports for kids who don't speak traditionally, so whether it's a student who uses a high-tech device, or a student who uses symbols to communicate, um, it's, it's a different way for kids to express themselves, and usually requires a speech pathologist with a high level of expertise. That we wouldn't be able to replicate per building, but we can create that expertise as a district and not have to contract out.
Megan, the, um, twelve formal referrals, uh, that, those are twelve students, complex students, correct?
Yes, yep.
And I'm just wondering, given the number of students we have in the district, does that seem like a low number?
It actually, I would say that that's twelve referrals that didn't have to go out to the Vermont I team, which is who we would contract with typically, and we still contract sometimes. Numbers-wise, I have a slide a little later on that looks at severity of disability, that's actually a pretty high number, or proportionately, that's a good number of kids, uh, with high needs in our district. But you're right, it's not, I mean, we have about three hundred and ninety kids eligible for special ed, so, it's a, it's a small number when you think about that, but, and I anticipate that the number will grow.
Will go up.
Yep.
I wanna make sure I heard correctly, are you saying that our early ed numbers for students coming to the programs in our schools are going down?
In some, in some towns.
Some towns?
Yep. Um, special ed eligible kids are going down, we're not really sure what that looks like, uh, or why, we, we know what it looks like, we're not really sure why. We also have found that there's a, of, some family, more families are finding it challenging to send their kids to a part-time program to access services when they need their kids in childcare all day, um, and so they are choosing to keep their kids in childcare. We don't know how long that trend will hold, that's part of what Shelley's studying.
That trend will hold as long as people are working.
Correct, and as long as we don't have full-day option- And as long as we don't have full-day options.
Yep.
Was it just in VT Digger that the number of childcare sites has dropped dramatically?
On BPR this morning also.
Yep. Which is more significant outside of Chittenden County, but it's anyone who's for kids for childcare anytime recently knows there's long reading lists even here. Okay. So the next few slides have a lot of numbers. They might be easier to look at in front of you or on your screen.
They're bouncing around.
I know. It's really like, it's very annoying. So I apologize for that.
To do with the frequency of the band, the wave of that.
Yeah. And you can see it. It's like if someone could stand up there and...
If you could go backpack and hung it from that thing, it would all go away.
Anyone who wants to experiment.
It's a good experiment.
Okay. So I will, you've seen these numbers, those of you who've sat here for a few years in a row. This is a chart that looks at a lot of things, our total number of students. This is our child count, which is number of kids eligible for special ed. We hover in our district around between eleven and twelve percent eligible. Statewide average is about fourteen and a half. So we are lower than the statewide average. What we, what I'd, what I'd show you here, this number here, this ratio of special education professional staff to total students, there is a significant body of research that suggests that where we want to be here is between one in fifty and one in eighty. And research shows that that's the number of professionals you need in your system to be able to adequately respond to kids with and without IEPs to support them. In years past, those numbers have been much higher. Over time, we have been working to reduce our support staff load to increase the number of professionals we have in the building. These are district-wide numbers. I have a slide that has, breaks that out by school. So we've spent a lot of time getting ourselves to be here. This is a good ratio for us professionals. We also look at this bottom line, which is the number of support staff paraprofessionals that we have. As you know, it's been a, it's well-understood in the education field that you want your most expert people working with your most struggling learners. And that causes us to rethink how we deliver services. We spend a lot of time looking really closely at what's the appropriate role of paraprofessionals in the delivery of service and what's not an appropriate role. And how do we make sure that when kids are receiving instruction, it's from teachers? And that causes us to need to look to reduce paras. As you can see, it has been an area of focus, but those numbers, these ratios on the bottom, have not markedly changed over the past several years. I think if you were sitting in most school districts, you'd find the same thing. We rely heavily on support staff. In a couple slides from now, I'm going to talk a little bit about the service delivery model, changes that we are trying to achieve. But we have a goal in our, we have a target in our district to make this number higher, meaning fewer support staff. We would want to be around one to five, which is based on a combination of state and national research and also looking at our own schools and how we deliver services. Questions on the district-wide data?
The one to five will also be where if the state is seeing that as best practice and wants to get us there, and once they change the funding model, they will have the tools to enforce that.
Yes.
So we, it's in our best interest to start finding a way to serve kids and meet that number rather than have to do it overnight, you know, a couple of years from now.
Exactly.
And is that, are these ratios separate from the whole ratio study that's being done now?
They're like a portion, yeah. Well, they're, the study that's being done is, these are baked into it, but this is pulled out and looking just at special ed. So this doesn't include general ed, support staff. Right. Yep. So here are our numbers across the district. It's the same chart, except it's divided up by school. One thing, a couple of things I'd highlight here. One of them is CVU, oh, these are current numbers, by the way. This is what you have right now. And CVU is really at the upper end of that threshold. One to eighty is the max of professionals to total student body that we would want. And so in the budget that you're seeing, next year, they tip over that ratio with the number of kids there. So we, there is an additional special educator professional-level position in this, in this budget for CVU to keep that ratio more in alignment with where we need it to be. I think that's the only piece that I would highlight here. The, you'll see, CVU, if you were looking at last year's slide, they traded in a support staff position to increase their speech-language pathologist load. We also restructured within the system, speech pathologists, to move them, to move a position over to the high school because they were quite low on that also in years past. Yep. Jeff?
So students who are considered to be special education, students are those on IEPs and/or 504s, is that...
So 504 is not part of special education. So they're not, so that's why 504 is pulled out. In some school, right, in high, in some schools, special education case managers are the ones who also oversee section 504. It's why we build the budget together, but technically, they are not part of the special ed budget, except that I speak to them here. At the high school, there's enough kids in that line item that we have case managers dedicated just to section 504. Good question. So I want to highlight to the board, we look at this every year. This looks at our disability category pattern. So disability category is for kids eligible for special education, and we divide them up into mild, moderate, and intensive disabilities. This bottom category is developmental delay, which is the only category for early childhood. Over time, we have, we usually don't see a lot of fluctuation in these numbers, but this year, you can see that we have thirty percent of our students fall into the category of intensive disability. So you've heard us talk for a number of years about more challenged kids are in our system, and that bears out. These numbers show that. Our mild disability numbers are going down and our severe disability numbers are going up. And I think that's important context for the board to have when you're talking about a budget that is in place to serve kids who are entitled to these services. One of your schools has, that number is forty percent. In one of your schools, forty percent of their special ed students fall into this intensive disability. And that, those categories are emotional disturbance, autism spectrum disorder, multiple disabilities, and deaf-blindness. Those are the categories there. Brendan?
Just answer some questions.
Okay. Yep.
Do we have any sense of why this saw the shift this year that was pretty dramatic really?
So we had, we've had a lot of kids move in this year, although we sort of say that every year. We dug even deeper to see which disability category of the ones that I just named. We don't have a, we have had more growth in kids with multiple disabilities than autism. Not necessarily emotional disturbance, which some people assume that that's where that that growth came from. Our numbers, and in this, the one school has a really high number, they don't bear out that way. So I don't know, Russ. It's hard to say. Anecdotally, people say they moved to Champlain Valley because of services. I don't know that that's true, but...
So what is the correlation between intensive disability and extraordinary costs?
Often, often a big correlation, a strong correlation. Because whether you're talking about a student who, even if you're talking about a student with an intensive disability who's served here in our building, if they have a one-on-one paraprofessional and a significant amount of special educator time and occupational therapy and physical therapy, all of those services get added up and they probably fall into the extraordinary cost threshold. So yes, but that doesn't always happen. Sometimes they hover right below the threshold in terms of reimbursement, but it is highly likely that this higher percentage means we have a higher number of kids receiving extraordinary cost reimbursement. We'll know that more.
Well, so going forward then with that one seventy-three, more, if that's the category that's growing, we actually, that's...
Will still be protected from big swings in that number if they tip over the threshold. The threshold goes up a little, though, so that it'll be interesting to see how that changes things. We get more money back, but the threshold is higher.
But then that more money back has a greater population to serve, right?
So that's the goal with the, yeah, what Kelly's saying is we will have more flexibility in how we use the money. Because the, unlike right now, special ed dollars can only go to special ed students. Now, the money will just come into our general fund, but we don't really know how the state will interpret that.
Right.
So that's a little bit, a little bit to be determined.
And then can I just ask, a little historical perspective? Because there was a time in St. George where I had a child in my school district who was extraordinary need. I was able to budget the extra one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per school year for this child, year to year, for three years, knowing. But I didn't, do you have that kind of insight, like, that we don't have, but you might have, that if, if we're looking at certain amount of costs over, like, I knew that, for example, this child was going to be in need for the next three years, I could build it into my long-term planning?
Well, that, all of the budget that you see is based on the kids and the grades that they are going to be in. And it's based on kids that we anticipate coming into the system. Now that we have early education, we know where kids are. We actually, because we spend a lot of time collaborating with birth to three, we actually know, we know of six-month-old kids right now and know when they will arrive. So to answer that part of the question, yes, we have a pretty good way of being able to forecast. The other reality is we have a lot of kids who enter our system, we have a lot of kids who enter our system and are placed here.
Yep.
That's, when that happens, they are here and they are one hundred percent reimbursable. That won't change with the funding model because they're what's known as state-placed. But sometimes we have kids that just move in, and those are the ones you cannot predict. We're a bigger system, though. So the swings that you used to see in St. George or that Charlotte used to see are softened because the budget is bigger.
So I guess I want to, I want to ask Lynn's question again. And I guess, so say we had ten students who were on special ed and seven of them cost a dollar, but you had three of them that were extraordinary needs that were much more than a dollar. If that number becomes, not seven and three, but it comes six and four, how does the new model affect our risk of special education costs going up?
So the, the fact that it still has an extraordinary cost component protects us from just, because we're going to get a number per our four, you know, four thousand kids. We're going to get a number per that four thousand. And it doesn't matter...
The mix doesn't matter.
It, right, it doesn't matter, and it doesn't matter how much we spend, so to speak. We're going to get the same amount of help from the state. So if we spend more, we still get the same amount from the state. If the kid, if individual kids have higher costs, then we will get reimbursement for that. So we're protected against the, a significant amount of kids moving in. What we're not protected against is your typical special education student is, doesn't fall into extraordinary cost, but still can cost, well, up to fifty-five thousand dollars. And yet, we will get the census-based grant amount for that kid, which is not fifty-five thousand dollars.
So it's the, it's the pathway to the extraordinary cost that's the biggest risk.
Right.
Like in between, as you build up costs to that point.
Right.
If you can think of the extraordinary cost, it's not even says not a hundred, but you could basically say that the state is picking up anything over that sixty thousand.
Right. Yes.
So we're protected from extraordinary costs. Our budget is protected from extraordinary costs because it goes to the state. I mean, it's not, it's not perfect, but that's a way to think about it.
You're responsible, you're responsible for ten percent of it above sixty thousand.
Right, right. Which is going to be small, given a relatively small number.
Right.
Something we can absorb in our budget. It's the, the much bigger concern is the census spending for the three hundred and eighty.
Right. And one thing to remember about the census spending is as the law is currently written now and being interpreted, and this doesn't mean that the legislature won't tweak it, but there is no cost of living increase on that uniform base amount. So this is what I mean by, the advisory group that I sit on is likely to recommend that they put in a cost of living increase or some sort of, but as it...
Give them some indices if they'd like to reference.
Correct.
Wow.
But as of right now, what you get, what they calculate in FY twenty-five, as written in the law, is just that's the amount.
So extremely detailed question is, I'm sorry, somebody else?
No, no.
Is the population, is the census value that we get or the reimbursement value that we get, is it based on an average of the overall population as seen in the state of Vermont? Or is it modeled or is it modeled over, is it calculated from a population larger than Vermont? As far as like what percentage of kids in this particular-sized school would, you know, you'll receive this much money?
So they will calculate the grant based on spending and then divide it by the average, I think they're doing three-year average ADM. So when they do the one calculation that's going to then determine it for here forward...
But so it's based, it's based on past spending?
Yes. Past spending and past average ADM, three years, both. And then it, then that will boil down to a number, and then that number in the current legislation is it. That's what you will get times your ADM forever.
So it's our past three years of spending?
So our pa...
It's not the state.
Twenty twenty-five.
It switches over to the state.
Right. The first year is based on our spending, and at the same time, they calculate the uniform base amount. And then in between, you just step up or down to that uniform base amount. And once you hit FY twenty-five, then we all have the same amount.
Okay. I was curious if the pop, if it was based on like an average Vermont population and you're saying, no, it's based on our spending?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's also based on the notion that they think they can reduce that spending. So that's why there's not a cost of living in there.
Yeah. I mean, it's unequivocally, right, it was pushed as a cost containment, although there was a significant amount of advocacy to say, if you want to do this better, don't try to use this law to cost-contain. That is, that was the goal.
Use the law to provide services by more accessibility. I think one of the things that's interesting that I learned actually pretty recently is that most of the states in the country use a census model. So it's not like Vermont is going down a path that no one else has gone down. It's that we've had a different path that has encouraged extra spending in a way. So we're hopeful that we really can provide better services with the money that we're getting. We're at the middle. We should be, we should be okay with this and be able to do, be much more creative in the work that we're doing with kids.
Right. And the other entire half of this law, and Lynn had asked about, do we need to spend some time learning about that? The other half of this law is about best practice and about serving all kids. And it's about, and multi-tiered systems of support, which you've heard us talk about over and over again. And it's about doing better. It's about doing what we're doing and doing it more effectively. So at some other point, I'd be happy to talk about that half of the law because that's actually the more, that's the more interesting part, and that's what really drives our work. A lot of the things that you're hearing us talk about related to service delivery model, in a, in certain budgets years, budget years, it achieves some cost containment, but this is because we believe this is better for kids. And that's why we're doing it. So we, so we folded the budget up together, sent it off to the state on October fifteenth. It was sitting at a percentage increase that we knew wasn't going to be sustainable in order to meet the board's target. So during round two service plan conversations, we are talking about continuing to move forward service delivery model changes that are more effective, that emphasize instruction delivered by professionals. So there's two elements to that. All of our schools are engaged right now in work around kids who have one-on-one paraprofessional support. And that work is long-term and it's deep and it's going well. So they're learning a lot about how do you program for kids? How do you really target when kids need support and when they don't? We think that work is in a place where we want to let that keep going for a little while. So when we think about reducing support staff, we're not looking right now at reducing one-on-ones because they're engaged in really good work about making sure they're making good decisions about the level of support kids need. about the level of support kids need. What we do know is that we have, we still have paraprofessionals who are not working one-on-one and are providing academic support or instruction. And we know that that's not who we want struggling learners to get their intervention from. We want that intervention to come from professionals. That's why we've spent all this time bringing these ratios up, so that we have enough professionals in the system to deliver that service. So, when we talk about getting to our para-targets, it is in the realm of focusing on moving academic support away from paras into professionals. Over time, we think this first bullet, the working on one-on-one, might, might get us to a place where we need fewer one-on-ones, but that's not our target right now. Because right now, they're learning about how do you make good decisions about when a kid needs an additional amount of support. So, the budget that you're gonna see is, bakes in reductions to get us closer to our target, that ratio of one to five. We are still in conversations about exactly what those targets are and where they will come from. We want that to be a very targeted, building-level conversation. So, these are some numbers. I put three years in here, just so you can have a sense of the variability of the special ed budget, even in a consolidated system. So, three years ago, this is the percent increase that you saw, a 7% increase. That's pretty high. That was, we had additional staff added, mainly actually to achieve some of those ratios. We had a decrease in tuition. Last year, we had sort of this miraculous budget that came almost in at 0%. It had a lot to do with the fact that our benefits went down, and we had a reduction in tuition. We had a couple of costly, high-cost students exit the system, and this is-
And that's the reason that we were able, a huge reason why we could hit 2.3% last year.
Right, right. This is, this is a rarity, and it's why I wanted to include the slide from the year before. And the year before that, I think we were in the 4.6. So, you know, this is, 3.3, first of all, includes reductions. So, it includes reductions that we will have to go find, but we think that we can do that and still effectively deliver services for kids. We have had another increase in tuition. So, tuition is when we pay to send kids to independent special education schools. So, it's not tuition to another high school, it's tuition to, for kids who need a highly specialized program that we can't serve here. That number had trended down for a few years, and it is back up again. We've also built a lot of capacity in our system and continue to work on building capacity. I would say that when kids are outplaced, it's because they really need something different. And we're still looking at making sure that we only come to that conclusion after we've exhausted all of our supports. So, questions on special ed, before I spend just a couple minutes on integrated wellness? Okay, if you think of them later, you can send them to Brendan. So, integrated wellness, for those of you who haven't heard us talk a little bit about this, and again, this is another one of those topics that in year-round budgeting, you'll get a more in-depth presentation about all the services behind what we mean when we say integrated wellness. But Connecting Youth is a program that, for the past number of years, we have been, we've recognized that the services provided by Connecting Youth are part of our student support system. They need to be provided in order for us to meet the needs of our students, and so, we've been folding them into the budget, and as opposed to having them be this little side entity, which is why you're seeing their slides here tonight. And the main services, this is the staffing that exists right now for CY. SAPs are student assistance professionals, I think is the term. Mentoring coordinators, the director of integrated wellness is Christine Lloyd Newberry, who coordinates integrated wellness, and project outreach coordinator. So, SAPs and mentor, mentor coordinators, they're part of our support, system of support. They're part of our prevention framework. So, a number of years ago, a multidisciplinary team, including community members, created a framework for how we, how we ensure that our kids have the, the resources they need to, to not abuse substances and to be successful students. And SAPs and mentor coordinators are some of the service providers, in addition to school counselors and school social workers and other roles like that, who provide those supports. So, what we didn't want is to have conversations about whether or not those staff are expendable. They are a necess, if we don't deliver prevention services with an SAP, we have to find some other way of delivering it. So, this year, year to year, we're not proposing any FTE change in SAPs. In mentoring coordinators, so each of our K8s has had a mentoring program for some amount of time. About three years ago, CVU received grant funds to start and pilot a mentor program. It was begun with the understanding that after three years, that that money, that it would then become supported by the general fund. This was a program really well-supported by Adam, principal. And the goal at the time was to create a program that would allow eighth-grade students who have mentors to still have mentors when they come to high school. It was not to add new mentors or take on new students. It was just to keep the kids who had benefited from it in middle school going through high school. That program has been quite successful. It is staffed by a halftime, a 0.5 mentor coordinator at CVU. And Adam and Christine and their team believe that there were many kids for whom, who could benefit from the mentor program and can't in its existing form, because right now, it only serves kids who come in with mentors. So, the budget that you see includes, and there's, in the next slide, there will be numbers, but includes an additional halftime mentor coordinator to bring the high school mentor program coordination up to 1.0. That is a restructuring, it's a, it's a staff, it's a neutral staffing, because next year, this project outreach coordinator position, which is currently halftime and functions out of central office, will not be in place next year. Questions on this? Yep?
So, I'm understanding that Charlotte did not have SAP coverage, is that correct?
It's correct, so, yes. SAPs, before we were consolidated, were individual district-level decisions. So, every school took the prevention framework that we have, looked at the different components, looked at who can provide the various services, and then decided how they wanted to provide them. Some of the services in that framework can be provided by professionals other than SAPs, and Charlotte was one of the schools who decided to do that. We are now in a system where one of the things that we have started doing is saying, how should those 2.6 SAPs be distributed? As of right now, Charlotte does not have them. Other people in the building take up those functions.
So, there is prevention education going on, initial?
Yes, yep.
Maybe I missed a bit, what does the, what did the project outreach coordinator do that no longer will be being done?
So, to answer that, I'll jump ahead to the next slide. The other, because it's related to grant funding. So, the other reality that board members who've been around for a long time know about CY is that it was a very heavily grant-funded program, and those grants have slowly, over time, gone away. And that's a challenge, to figure out, how do you budget for that? How do you predict that accurately? That's part of why we did the work to recognize what portions of CY need to be part of our budget and what portions could go away if grant dollars go away. And we've taken the step to ensure that these positions, these top three, those are necessary parts of delivering our system of supports. We also get grant money to do other really great things. Right now, one of the things this project outreach coordinator does is work with a coalition with Burlington, Champlain Valley, a couple of other school districts, on a parent outreach and parent coordination, and they create a lot of resources. That is a grant-funded project. Unlike in years past, when that grant runs out, that position will go away. And so, there's been a decision that we won't stop seeking grants. There's a lot of really great, Christine is a great grant writer. She has really good connections to funding unique things that support kids. The difference is that if we add infrastructure for grant tasks that are not part of our core functions, then when the grant goes away, that infrastructure will go away. So, this project outreach coordinator, right now, is associated with grant tasks that are, it's, it's this, it's this coalition, it's a lot of community outreach. And once that grant sunsets, the position will sunset. And in this year, what we're proposing is that we repurpose that position to shore up the mentoring program at CVU. Questions? Oh, I forgot I had this slide, that's the year-to-year. Brendan?
So, I'm looking at the round two service plan on this slide, carrying it to...
Carrying it to... I guess essentially, what I'm looking for is, can you explain a little bit more about the 3%, the 3.3% increase? I see it in salaries, benefits, and tuition. Is that additional staff, or what does that look like?
So, they are, we pull out salaries, benefits, and tuition, and transportation, because those are the biggest ticket items. So, the, I would, behind that 3.3% is the staffing, there's a, the new special, the additional special educator at the high school, and the benefit increase and tuition increase. Those are the biggest drivers of it.
It's part of the fluctuation in transportation on this slide.
It's a great question, without a good answer. Transportation is incredibly complicated in special education, because any given year, so, the students that I talk about that are educated outside of our district, we have to get them there. And that can mean buses going in lots of different directions, and but, and it's expensive. And it, and it, and we've built infrastructure to, to try not to have to run an entire bus for one kid, but sometimes we do. We've tried to be really creative. We partner with other school districts sometimes and say, hey, are you going to this school? Can my kid ride your bus, and we'll split the cost? But it is notoriously very hard to predict, hence the fluctuation. Hard to predict, and also, it just, you know, we talk about students who have extraordinary costs. There are some kids whose transportation costs exceed the cost of programming for them. And that's just something that we are obligated to provide through special ed. It's a good question, though. Russ?
So, it sounds like we have shifted the employees that we have from more with less professional qualifications away, you know, kind of away from that-
Yep.
-type of employee to employees with more professional qualifications. Are we having any challenges hiring those people? Are they available in this market?
Professionals, yes. We have the advantage of being a district that people want to come to. And I don't, I don't say that to sort of like-
It's a specialist director.
No, I mean it's-
Yeah, they all want to work with me. But it's, when we hire people, whereas many districts hire, and actually, we've hired some recent graduates, and they're amazing, but we often hire people who've been in the field five or 10 years. Same, same thing with teachers. So, no, we're actually having a much harder time finding support staff positions, because our, those salaries are not as competitive, and the employment rate is low.
They can make as much work, you know, out of getting exchange.
Yes, exactly, exactly, which, and that's all-
They have better discounts.
They do, we don't offer good discounts. But that is also a reality that causes us to say, well, if we can do it better anyway with the professional. Yep. Any other questions?
Under the new law and the, the changes, does that look like there will be a significant shift in professionals' time spent on paperwork and billing and-
Yes.
And the reimbursement piece?
Yes.
And more time freed up for education?
Absolutely, yes, we're optimistic, and I, I sit on the committee, you guys got the reports from this, but whose job is to inform the legislature, and we had a meeting on Monday, and the agency of ed made me feel pretty optimistic that they too, they don't want to have people at the agency going through all of those papers that we create. And that burden is significant, and one of the things that the district management group said is, you want these professionals not to spend their time doing paperwork. So, that is, you know, as much as the funding system is gonna be something different for us to get used to, we support it, I support it. It's, it is, it will give us flexibility. I think we can manage the cost containment part of it, and it's got a lot of other things in the law that are good for kids. Yeah?
What's the number of students currently at CVU that we foresee or we think that might need that Connecting Youth that don't have it? What's that percentage of students?
Oh, that's a good question that I don't have at my fingertips, but I can get that to you. Christine had, Christine and Adam have a projection of how many kids they would serve through mentoring if they had additional capacity. I just don't have it off the top of my head. Christine has a chart, I can get it to you. Okay?
Thank you. And thus ends the budgeting session for the evening. Again, if you think of questions, send them to Brendan. And I'm just gonna take a quick minute to pass out the board evaluations while we shift gears here.
Budget buddies, sir.
Budget buddies, you're welcome to stay and listen to the rest of the meeting, but this is actually, the budget part is, we're gonna get this done in half an hour. Thank you, Megan and Jean.
Oh, sorry.
So, reports to the board, 5.1 on the committee. Finance, Brendan, Miss Jean.
I think Jean did an awesome job summarizing what we've been working on. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions?
HR, labor, Russ?
Paul in the minutes? There we are. So, Mark updated us on the situation with the firm handling the third-party administration for the employee HRA accounts. Contracts have been awarded to Data Path for 2019. For those of you who don't recall, they're the firm who kind of came in and, you know, took a long time, but, but corrected the problems that were caused by the first EPA that ourselves and many districts around the state had hired. So, I think that continues to improve, and we're optimistic for next year, but it's not a very big problem. Mark is continuing to go back and forth with both of the bargaining units for teaching and non-teaching to try to get things started. They, I think both of them have indicated their desire to negotiate a contract for the 2019, 2020 school year. The, we've had a lot of conversation about doing salary review for non-represented employees. The gentleman who has done this work for us in the past, Frank Sadowski of Gallagher Flynn, will be hopefully providing us that information sometime after Thanksgiving, so I'm not quite sure how that's defined.
Yep, we've been, we've been in touch this week and hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, and then finally, we, we'd had some conversation about our conflict of interest regarding contract negotiations. We'd had an attorney provide a legal opinion in a letter about 15, actually, I guess it was back in 2001. He'd said when that was provided, and we felt it was important to have that updated, or at least kind of verified, and didn't know if anything changed with the law and whatnot. So, Mark engaged Pedro Lynn to do that for us, and that has come back consistent with the letter from, from 15, 20 years ago. So, we feel like we're in, we're in good shape with that. And we'll talk more in executive session.
Indicators, you will have indicators needing minutes. We're gonna get, Erin and I are gonna get on the same page.
And my laptop just died, and now that meeting was so long ago, so-
We had a meeting.
We had a meeting, we had a good discussion. We had a meeting, we had a discussion, and I do know we had a discussion about indicators in the budget and where we're going in terms of marrying this process, and so that we have indicators that more, you know, perhaps meatier goals and expectations that are then driving the budget and those numbers. And hopefully, we are continuing on a path to get there in a year or even two with the way we're going. And then Jeff and Megan continue to walk us through the continuous improvement plan that we will be coming to the full board for approval in February or March. We looked at, now I'm trying to remember which two pieces of it that we looked at.
We looked at proficiency and personalization. And I think after looking at all of that, we decided that the indicators that we would look at this year would stick to the proficiency ones. We weren't going to, we'll work the M T S S ones and other ones into the indicator piece. And we have indicators for our mission. That was the huge highlight of it. Our mission statement all has indicators for it, so that's, that's exciting, that's exciting. So, now we're on to the exciting world of policy.
Yeah, so, we've gone through nicotine and tobacco. I think we finished up substance abuse, and just this morning, we discussed a video policy because we are
Video surveillance.
Use, use of video surveillance, correct. That is right. So, we have a model policy from another school that we reviewed, had a good discussion about. We'll see that next month when it's appropriate, when we have time to discuss. Just because of budgeting, give me that look. I'm curious why we're not approving the nicotine policy this week?
We're, it's going to be on next week's agenda. So, there, when, when the decision was made to cancel last week's meeting, there was discussion of, are we going to move the whole meeting forward? Or are we just going to do budgeting? And there was a little bit of
All right.
confusion, and the reality is, we want to make sure that we warn the things properly that have to be warned. And by the time that we figured out
Yep.
that that needed to be warned more than 12 hours in advance.
Cool.
It's just easier to do it next week.
Great. Yeah?
There we are.
Oh, policy's awesome. Having a great time. It's great conversations.
Okay.
Five point two, any questions on the committee? Five point two, Colt.
The thing I would point out from the call report are really the meetings that you and I are having with the C V U student leadership teams. We have one tomorrow, right?
Yes.
With the think tank tomorrow. It really is interesting. It's really interesting for me because it turns out that kids are on different, you know, you're seeing the same kids on different committees. A week ago or two weeks ago, Jeff and I were part of the C V U think tank, day-long summary, nineteen kids with a bunch of adults and really working the adults, supporting the kids from the questions they had. And there were a number of kids there who were kids that I had met at the meetings that we're going to. So, that's really, you know, of the things that we've added to our calendar, boy, that's really, that's really real good. So, I just wanted to point that out. And I would say today, Bonnie, Megan, and I were at a joint meeting of the superintendent, student services directors, and curriculum directors focused around the world-class education, Vermont's world-class education agenda, and specifically around personalization. And I felt really good about the work that we're doing. You know, we had an opportunity in the morning to go and listen to other presentations and see what other people are doing. And I feel really good about the work that Jeff, kudos Jeff, and all the principals are doing around this and where we are with that. And something, who just said, somebody just said about, oh, you, Erin, about the connection of our, you, about our mission and that the indicators are there. When people were coming around and watching ours, it was really clear to me that one of the main reasons that we are so grounded in this work around personalization is because it is specifically and directly tied to the board's mission. And that gives it prominence that I didn't hear anywhere else. So, thanks for a great mission, you guys.
I think that was a team effort.
Thanks for good work, Jeff, also. Yeah, no, I know, but you're the ones who's coordinating that. Any questions about the Colt report?
Principals report, any questions on the principals report? Student council?
How did we think that we had the past month was happening for a college, we do every year?
It's usually in December, but we moved it up to November. And we, do you remember the numbers on that by chance?
I don't happen to remember. It was a lot of money raised.
It was a lot of money.
It was nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, it benefited the Chittenden County Humane Society, so that was really well, went really well.
Yeah, we just kicked off our Penguin Plunge. We had our rally this week. Last year, we had two hundred and one plungers and raised, I don't even remember how many tens of thousands of dollars.
It's over fifty for sure.
Yeah, it was a lot. So, this year, the goal is more people in the water. And if you want to go jump in the lake, let me know. We'll get you signed up.
You're a big Navy fan, aren't you?
Hey. I think I have a basketball game that weekend. I'll support Kate.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
Celebrate the arts tonight. G A is here, and it's usually January is now most, December thirteenth, so it's next week.
I encourage all of you to come here. It is a remarkable evening. And it's not just high school anymore. It started as a high school function, but now many, many K students in schools are representing their work throughout this building. Music, art, graphic arts, it's, it's, it's an amazing display of our students' work.
And Nexus is, the Nexus students are having, or students
Exhibitions are soon, I can get that date, everybody.
Oh, I thought they were, they're not part of the
They're part of it. They're in
Is it the same evening? On the same evening. I didn't know they embedded that, okay?
They sent a, they sent an invite to all school boarders yesterday.
For the first time, it's kind of nice. Okay, Jean, first quarter F M R.
First quarter F M R is really easy because we do it at the end of September, so we have exactly, you know, one month of data to work with. So, basically, all we do is move forward actual salaries, actual things we know, not a whole lot of interest, except that right, as of right now, I don't see any reason to be concerned that we can't make our numbers. Want more information in January when we have a little more data behind us.
Any questions on the first quarter F M R? Five point six, V S B A conference debrief. Boy, that seems like a long
It was a long time ago. It was in October. It was really a long time ago. I thought it was one of the best conferences. I've been going to these for thirteen years now. And I thought that it was really well-done this year.
I think we all gained, I, I went to the pullouts on the dashboard, which should be coming out soon, like in the next couple of weeks.
Actually, I just got noticed, I just got noticed today that it's delayed by a couple of weeks.
I hear when they do that to you, you're like, oh, I should be getting this, and then everyone else turns it
Actually, if they could just delay itself after budget season, that would be really good. And then
The community
Oh, community engagement. We went to a great pullout on community engagement and, and kind of warnings if, if there are specific ways that you set yourself up to do it. And it actually prompted us to take a look at what we do for community engagement. Elaine has a, has a chart that is a work in progress. We actually do a lot more than I think we, we do.
I think it's linked in their packet also.
Oh, good.
Under the executive committee notes.
And then the big keynote speaker was
I know, it was so long
Thank you.
Who was it?
Paul Revell.
Oh, gosh.
Spoke about equity. Yeah.
Yeah, he was great.
And opportunity. So, that was, it was a good conference. I would encourage you, it's always in October, it's, it's
Always at Lake Maury.
I, if, and it is part of, it's part of our line item in our budget.
Right.
The district pays for the lodging and the, and the, and the conference. So, I would encourage you guys to look at your October schedules next year. I don't know if it's always the second weekend.
Second or third has bounced around a little bit.
That's good. Okay.
And you also sent me the numbers. Remember, we were, we were curious about dues. We pay seventeen thousand in dues and what their overall budget is, and their total income for V S B A is three hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
We're not
What we did find out at that conference, though, was that for years, we've been paying V S B A dues and National School Board Association dues. And we found out at the conference that actually, by being V S B A board members
You don't need
we don't need the national because V S B A has access to anything we would need. So, we save some money. And I took it out of next year's budget already somehow. So, that's a hundred and sixty, I'm not, we're
It's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah. Okay. Six point oh, discussion matter, six point two, community forum debrief. I know the finance committee talked about it in their
I feel like we had this already, didn't we?
Well, we talked a little bit about it at the executive committee.
Right.
Oh, right.
And the notes are there about that.
Any other thoughts on the, we're going to do a little redesign next year on that, I think, is the bottom line.
Well, I mean, I looked through, and Bonnie did a great summary, and I looked through to kind of see if there was anything there that we hadn't already taken into account, and I'm pretty confident that it's covered, but everybody should take a look at the summary that Bonnie put together. If we're missing something, you know, we do, we want to respect the people who came and gave us input. So, if there's something there we missed, we should address it. And we may not be able to add everything people want, but, you know, we can certainly, especially at a hundred and sixty-eight thousand to go. But, you know, there could be something that, that's interesting that we missed. But I read through it, and I didn't, I thought we had addressed a lot of the stuff either here or in the finance committee.
Okay. That's all there is. Seven point oh, next meeting dates. We're here next Tuesday. You will not be here on Christmas, but following two Tuesdays here. Next Tuesday, we're going to start at five thirty. It's going to be a lengthy meeting. There's a lot to go over. We're doing instructional programs, so five thirty here. And I know some of you have already said you can't come. This meeting is live-streamed on R E T N, and it's through their Facebook link. It's always on the bottom of our agenda. So, Dave's going to have his phone on, and if you have questions
Yeah, just
Text away to Dave.
Yeah.
Thank you for volunteering.
Yeah, no problem.
But seriously, that's a good way to give input if you're watching at home. And then January eighth and January twenty-second? How, let's do this. I'm going to, well, I'm going to ask for, I want to ask for a motion to go into executive session, but I want people to fill out your
Yes.
Your
Do the exit cards?
Your exit cards.
So, just in case you think that it's useless information or something, we have the executive committee meeting at eight o'clock tomorrow morning, and that's always on the agenda to review these exit cards. And one of the board members noticed last month that, that the ratings were great, but it was only half of you who filled it out. So, it's really important to fill it out, get it back to us so that we can have a sense of, are there things that are going well or not?
So, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session for the first of personnel and negotiations.
So, move.
Is there a second? Thank you.